Morning and welcome to our study session. We have two items today and we'll be starting with our climate planning update. And that'll be Maren Murphy. Welcome, Maren.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President and Council members. Maren Murphy here with Planning Services and we're going to share an update on climate planning. We do have our consultant team with us virtually, so excited to have their participation. And I also just wanted to mention that we of course have Spencer Gardner, our Planning Director, and Logan Callen with Integrated Capital to just kind of be backup if any more specific questions come out. And oops, let's see here. Are we sharing? Awesome. So with that, oops, we want to just do a quick primer on the comp plan and all the integration there. So I'm going to turn it over to Spencer briefly and then I'll jump back up.
We just want to take a minute to explain, there's a couple of moving parts here. So on the, the climate planning is a new, a new requirement under new state law that has to occur during our periodic update to the comprehensive plan. So we have a duty and a requirement to occasionally update our comprehensive plan. We call that our periodic update. That is set to occur every 10 years. Our update is due in 2026. We evaluate a number of different topics during that comp plan and we have done so for many years now. You can see the list, land use, transportation, capital facilities. It's sort of like basic planning things. The new requirement is that we have to include consideration for climate and, and resiliency in our comprehensive plan. So wanted to talk through just briefly the logistics of how we're planning to accomplish that. Our expectation, state law gives us a couple of different options for how we integrate climate into our plan. Our expectation is that we will integrate climate throughout all the chapters rather than having a separate chapter to deal with climate as its own special topic. But the, the process that we're going to follow to do some of that climate planning and to meet the requirements of state law is happening sort of on a parallel track with the rest of our comprehensive plan because we have a lot of new requirements and new information and analysis that we have to do. We've brought in a consultant team and you'll hear from them today. But the way that we integrate the climate planning into the rest of the comprehensive plan, I think where, where that integration really occurs is through the environmental impact analysis, the CIPA process that will, that we will go through for our comprehensive plan update. And that will, during that time is when we will identify what we call growth scenarios. That's part of the environmental impact study. You identify the scenarios and then you do analysis on each of those scenarios to help educate you as the decision makers and the public as far as what the potential impacts are of those different scenarios. Then we choose a preferred scenario and that kind of flows into then the adoption of the comprehensive plan because the policies that we adopt are really driven by the scenario that we choose. So the process of integrating our climate planning and our, the rest of our comprehensive plan is really in that, that definition of scenarios. And we'll be back before you several times to talk about the different scenarios as they take shape. Obviously, we'll be out with the public talking with them as well. We just wanted to give you an overview of how this really fits in the larger context of the comprehensive plan update. So I'll turn it over to Maren and she'll continue on with sort of the climate specific portion. Did you have a question?
And Spencer, thank you. So I'm just trying to, when you talk about scenarios, I'm just trying to get my head around scenarios of things that are happening, things that might happen. Just tighten it up a little. I just can't, I'm just trying to envision scenarios. Are they made up scenarios?
Thank you. So I'll give you an example. You've heard a lot about centers and corridors. That was an outgrowth of the scenario that we selected during our first comprehensive plan back in 2001. So we identified what we, what I think around the state was called a focused growth scenario. What that means is in our selected, our preferred scenario, we said, "We want growth to occur in these urban districts that we define." And we've called them centers and corridors. Now, our update gives us the opportunity to look at scenarios from a fresh perspective. It may be that as a community, we decide that the centers and corridors approach is still the right path for us and we want to continue down that, down that path. We may, as a community, decide, you know, there's some good things about it, but maybe we need to make some adjustments. Or we may say, "You know what? That hasn't really worked. We don't like it and we don't think that's the vision for our community for the next 20 years and we want to try something completely different." That's, when we talk about scenarios, that's kind of what we're talking about. Does that give you some?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
So I don't entirely understand the connection between the, the climate issue and centers and corridors, but I'm also wondering if we're basically redoing the process that we, you know, underwent 30 years ago when the comp plan was put together. What were the other scenarios presented at that time? What led them to choose centers and corridors, which I think was a huge mistake? And, and how do we avoid, you know, repeating that mistake again?
I don't know all of the scenarios that were evaluated at that time, so I just wasn't here. So I'm, and I, I mean, I could research and understand a little bit better what all those scenarios were. I just know that the centers and corridors was an outgrowth of that process. Ultimately, this is a community conversation and that was what was selected by the, the Plan Commission and the City Council at the time. We may come to a different outcome here, but our goal is to really just have that community conversation and make sure that we're hearing, you know, from the community as to what direction they want to take. Other questions about that? Okay, so I'll turn it back over to Maren and today we're really focused on climate planning. So I just wanted to set the table with the larger discussion.
Thank you.
And just a heads up that Tyrell Black, who's not able to be here today, will be back here on October 24th for a study session specifically about the periodic update. So we can come prepared with some of that information and have some examples of what other jurisdictions have looked at that might give a little bit of insight into what kind of scenarios would be.
And if you've got, and I can always try to work through Terry, but if you've got any of that old information, I would honestly like to understand. I, I didn't really understand this whole scenario aspect of the comp plan being put together 30 years ago. But if we have some of those other ideas that were put forward that were not selected, it would be really helpful just to understand what drove them towards the centers and corridors and away from these others. And, you know, what does that look like for our decision making today?
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So again, thank you for the time today on climate planning. Before I turn it over to our first consultant, Lisa, I just wanted to say that we have about 20 minutes worth of presentation materials. We're happy to take questions throughout. I think we have 45 minutes, although less now. But I'm happy to take questions throughout, but also want to make sure we're getting through what we have today. So with that, I will kick it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Maren. And good morning, Council members. Thank you for having us. I'm Lisa Greeter. I'm a principal at Burke Consulting. I lead our environmental and land use planning practice. And Burke is serving as the prime consultant on this effort. Because climate planning and other aspects of growth management planning are interdisciplinary, we are joined by a great team of folks who have scientific, engineering, biology, community engagement, and other planning expertise. With me from Burke is Stephanie Hinmarch, one of our senior planners, and other folks on our team from Cascadia and KAI Kaufman Associates are here. And they'll introduce themselves as we, as we go through the presentation. Go to the next slide, please. We've organized our presentation to touch on the objectives of climate planning and our overall schedule. And then we'll talk more about the engagement strategy that was part of your packet, both the community-wide engagement and tribal engagement. And then elements of the climate risk and vulnerability assessment that are part of the grant the city received. And then there, as Maren mentioned, there's time for discussion either as we go or at the end. Next slide, please. To start off, we set forth some project objectives about the climate planning effort. We're trying to set the foundation for the climate and resilience element that's required meeting HB 1181 requirements and the state grant. HB 1181 touches on certainly preparing the climate element itself, but it also touches on other elements that Spencer spoke to on the other slide. It has requirements around planning for overburdened communities and the land use element, integrating tree canopy assessments and the parks element, addressing green infrastructure, capital facilities, and so on. So we'll be looking at the, the work, both the policy review and the climate vulnerability assessment from multiple angles. And also, as Spencer showed, there's some parallel efforts with the climate element work and the rest of the periodic update. And so the engagement process that we're outlining is meant to dovetail with the Plan Spokane effort. And as we do our work, both the information gathering and the engagement, we're going to focus in on Spokane specifically, but with an eye towards regional conditions as well. Next slide, please. We are at an early stage of the planning process and much of our work for the climate resiliency and risk assessment starts with information gathering. So we'll be looking at climate impacts, socioeconomic conditions, and we will also be pairing that with engagement results. As the process proceeds over that longer time period that Spencer introduced, there'll be setting of goals and a vision and then developing priorities and policies and then eventually looking at implementation, at which point the city would decide based on the priorities that are coming through the planning and engagement process, what require staff or other resources to implement. So we're, we're at the beginning and setting that foundation with information. Next slide, please. Our overall schedule, we started in late May and had a kickoff with an interdisciplinary, interdepartmental meeting of staff and have been developing the engagement strategy that's, that's in your packet. Now we're moving into some of the technical and policy review work associated with the grant. So a review of all the policies in the comprehensive plan as well as some codes in place and sustainability initiatives that the city has had in the past. And then exploring the impacts of climate and vulnerable communities. As well as one of the other aspects of HB 1181 is that the city address active transportation and multimodal levels of service. So that would address pedestrian bike transit as well as, as roads. And so one of our partner firms, Fair and Peers, will be helping with that effort. As we move into fall and the first quarter, we'll be working more directly on the climate vulnerability and risk assessment and we'll describe that in a little bit on our slides. And then eventually bring forward some policy recommendations. And as we go throughout this work, the engagement strategy is meant to engage the public and tribal members through this work and gather that as part of their early information. So I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ann Rosance to speak to that engagement process.
Much, Lisa. Thank you, everyone, for having us today. I'm Mary Ann. I'm a Senior Associate with Cascadia Consulting Group and leading the climate resiliency aspects for this effort. And I'm joined here by May Kors, who's also a Senior Associate at Cascadia and leading the community engagement. So as many of us are already aware, climate change is already impacting communities in Spokane and across the Northwest. And often these impacts happen in really, really complex and deeply personal ways. And we also know that understanding people's experiences, both with current impacts from climate change as well as anticipated future impacts are essential for completing the climate impacts and vulnerability assessment that reflects those on the ground community realities. The climate risk and vulnerability assessment that we'll talk about in a few slides after we touch on engagement will be used for policy development for addressing those impacts. And so we really work for, on integrating community engagement into the assessment phase just to make sure that we have representation from those who are most vulnerable to the impacts of climate change early on in the planning process. The engagement plan that was included in your agenda packet centers on four key objectives. First, inclusive and intentional outreach. We want to ensure that everyone who lives and works in Spokane has the opportunity to engage in the planning process by maximizing our outreach and communication efforts. So this includes working with trusted community entities for direct engagement with climate vulnerability populations. So for example, youth, older residents, and lower income community residents who are often more socially and economically vulnerable. And we also recognize that there are geographical differences in Spokane when we think about climate impacts and impacted communities and our intentional outreach efforts. So for example, we know that northeastern part of Spokane has less tree canopy cover and experiences greater heat and has maybe a higher percentage of social and economically vulnerable communities members. And we also know that the foothills of Spokane experience greater fire risk. A second engagement objective here is to maintain a planning process that is open, transparent, culturally sensitive, and accessible to all community members. And so our approach includes survey translation, for example, and other, translation of other key project documents as well as hosting convenient meetings and providing food, family-friendly activities, and community stipends for participating in engagement. And Cascadia's and Burke will be providing those stipends and translation, which is both included in our contracts. We'll also work with the city to strengthen existing community relationships to foster a collaborative environment through this planning process. And engagement activities are importantly aligned with key project points, right? So we're not bringing in engagement at the end. It's throughout. So that when we go and ask the community for input and integrate that public feedback, it can meaningfully inform our assessments and the plan development. So you go to the next slide. I'm just going to cut you off. Oh, go ahead.
Before she moves on, with this community engagement piece, are you all doing that work? Or is you're setting it up and staff here in Spokane is doing that work? Who's actually leading that?
It's a combination of both. So we'll be working with staff. So certain tabling events and maybe attending specific community, community organization touchpoints would be, you know, held. Those relationships would be held by city staff. City staff would participate in any, you know, public meetings and open house. But we are leading, you know, development of the survey, development of any focus groups, the development and structure of community open houses, you know, in, in partnership in working with the city. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Really quick, I'll just add, we are, you know, we have a, our core team here as well. And so we can supplement additional work. We do have some things scoped out per the contract. You know, we have a budget, but what we, what they can't do, we can look at our capacity and partner with them and try to offer more.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Maren. Yeah, things like tabling, participating in community events, other, other activities as well. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, I want to point out the things that we have. I think you go to one more slide unless I'm getting a delay. Should say, there we go, engagement phase. Oh, no, one back. I must have had a delay. Thank you, engagement phases. So I just want to point out that we do use different engagement approaches at different stages. And so right now we're at the beginning of this process and we've been meeting with staff, leadership, and we'll be meeting with stakeholders and community partners to understand climate impacts from diverse perspectives. And as we move through the planning process, we'll be working with a larger group of the public with using a survey and community meetings to establish a shared community vision. And at later phases, we'll be continuing engagement as we develop and refine draft goals and policies. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And I just want to share that earlier this summer, we did gather input from city staff using a staff, a staff survey in our project kickoff meeting with the city technical advisory committee. And we integrated these comments as well as other comments about engages, engagement process suggestions into the engagement plan. So for example, ensuring there are stipends for overburdened communities, meeting folks where they're at by working with community partners that are trusted messengers, and making sure we are building off of previous work and providing a mix of approaches. So you go to the next slide. Who are we in talking about engaging? So the engagement plan goes into greater detail with specific entities across these different categories. And just want to say that they were, the, the approach, you know, looks at these diversity of residence, community groups, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and others that hold different types of expertise, technical expertise, cultural expertise and perspective, lived experience. And they all represent some intersection with climate change and climate impacts. If you go to the next slide, I will just point out that we have, as part of the engagement, we have two advisory committees for this effort. I mentioned the city technical advisory committee that has key city entities listed here. And we're also working with city staff and the mayor's office to incorporate the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board as they're coming online. We have three proposed touchpoints with them as well as the city technical advisory committee. If you go to the next slide, I'm actually going to turn it over to John from KAI to talk about tribal coordination.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the chance to join the call today. Good afternoon, Council members. Congratulations on such an inclusive and intentional outreach that you're pursuing as you go through this process. I'm John Mankowski. I'm the Vice President for Environmental Justice and Climate Resilience at Kaufman and Associates. I'm leading our efforts to coordinate the tribal engagement for Spokane's climate impact and resiliency planning. I have a lot of expertise in environmental consulting and focus a lot on collaborating with indigenous communities. A word or two about Kaufman and Associates. Kaufman and Associates is a native organ, excuse me, native owned consulting firm with over 30 years' experience providing public health, education, economic development, and environmental justice solutions to those who work with tribal nations, federal agencies, and local governments like Spokane. Why is it important to coordinate with tribes within the urban area of Spokane and the surrounding areas? It's important because the Spokane, the Kalispel and Coeur d'Alene tribes and the urban natives have information to share. They're impacted by climate change and we really need to pursue a path that respects our sovereign rights and integrates traditional knowledge. Through this process of government to government conversations, we've established between the city, these consulting groups and the tribes, it'll ensure an open exchange of information and approaches. I'd like to remind everybody that tribes, in many cases, are leaders in climate resilience. They have many projects that they've funded over time and approaches that they can share. So as well as the importance of sharing the information and the approach that Spokane's taking, there's also a chance to learn from our tribal partners as well. Just a word or two on progress. Kaufman and Associates is in charge of helping organize and engage the tribal entities in partnership with those on this call in the city of Spokane. We've already made initial contacts with the Spokane, Kalispel, and Coeur d'Alene tribes and briefed them on Spokane's approach. We are going to be hosting monthly tribal engagement workshops to keep them informed and to encourage this two-way flow of information that I alluded to earlier. We have meetings scheduled across the summer and into the fall. And we'll be conducting these introductory meetings and sharing the information along the path. We'll be managing the work group agendas, facilitating the input, and ensuring the tribal perspectives are integrated into your climate policies. We're grateful for a chance to be part of this team, to work with the city, Burke, and Cascadia Consulting on, on this project.
Maren? So I just want to ask him, does he have a specific contract with the urban natives? I know there's a different tribes up there, but there is a large urban core of natives. Has he or will he be making contact with them?
Yes, that is in our work plan. Not a specific contract. It's all under the umbrella contract for tribal engagement. But included in that is identifying and working with the numerous organizations of urban natives in Spokane. And we have a list that we're working from.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
Great. Thank you, John. If you go to the next slide. We lost the slides, but it's probably up. So I just want to talk about how, just share an overview of our timeline for engagement. We'll be building out specific dates for upcoming engagement activities. For example, the survey and workshops. Right now, we're timing community engagement rollout for this project so that we can meet with the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board prior to finalizing community engagement. And then I just also want to point out with this figure that engagement touchpoints are aligned with key project elements so that when we learn from the community via the survey or focus groups and other activities, it will be timed appropriately and integrated to shape the project findings and outcomes. So what is it that we're going to be asking the community? So if you go to the next slide, I'm just going to give you a sense of what we'll be asking the communities through public engagement and how that will shape project findings and outcomes. So we're going to go walk through a few slides with an overview of some of the upcoming technical work on the climate risk and vulnerability assessment. So this assessment considers three key components. First is the exposure, or what are the climate hazards or exposures that we care about? For example, heat, smoke, extreme precipitation, et cetera. And we also know that not everyone and every community is exposed in the same way, right? So some areas, as I mentioned, experience higher temperatures with major differences even within the city boundaries. So a second key component here is sensitivity or the amount that something or someone is likely to be affected by those climate impacts. So we also know, for example, that not every person or community experiences impacts in the same way. We know that folks with underlying health conditions, for example, can be more sensitive to heat and smoke. And then third, we consider adaptive capacity or the ability of the system or individual to respond to the impacts from climate change. So with our heat and smoke example, this could mean the ability of an individual to be able to keep cool, such as going and staying inside and having access to air conditioning. And then wrapped up in all three of those major components for climate risk vulnerability assessment is an essential fourth component, which is the lived experience of people and communities. And I know that I've mentioned this several times, but of course, our team is going through existing data, reports, and analyses, but those are limited and that they, they often ignore those lived experiences that people are having in their communities. So if you go to the next slide, just want to point out that we have identified core focus areas for the climate risk and vulnerability assessment grouped here by human well-being, emergency management, ecosystems and water resources, infrastructure, community design, land use and economic development, as well as cultural and natural resources. And this, these categories align with the structure of the comprehensive plan. And we're discussed with city staff during our first city technical advisory committee meeting a few months ago. And so since then, we've begun initial analysis to identify the key climate impacts, community assets, and climate bowl and overburdened communities for this assessment. So I'll turn it back to Lisa, who will share an overview of the climate index and mapping work that, that we're doing.
Thank you. On our next slide here, we have just an overview of
On our next slide here, we have just an overview of the climate index. It will be a spatial component, a mapped component, interactive tool that goes with the written analysis. And the index is meant to summarize multiple data sets into one measure. Each component is standardized and re scaled, so it can be added together. And we can then compare block groups for the potential for exposure sensitivity and adaptive capacity. It's meant really as a tool for the city to take a closer look at particular areas. So we can go to the next slide and show you an example. We have recently done the climate and health index for Vancouver, and this is an example of exposure. So we're going to do multiple indices. So we'll look at exposure. And here, we're showing the combination of heat, flooding, and air quality. And then it gets summarized into a sub-index. We'll also do a sub-index for sensitivity, which, as Marianne mentioned, is health, age, and other environmental factors that could cause populations or places to be more or less sensitive to climate impacts. And then adaptive capacity. So we'll be able to kind of roll things up and see at a big picture level which areas are more or less vulnerable, but we'll also be able to look more closely at any one indicator or these sub-indices to kind of see what might be the factors that are causing an area to be highlighted in the work. And as Marianne mentioned, it needs to be paired up with other information, qualitative information, to really get the enriched perspective. If you go to the next slide, we have just a list of the various data sources that we're considering. And I want to mention that we will be leveraging local information, such as tree canopy, or stormwater, or many other things that the city has developed. We'll be also looking at other state and federal sources for information. And this information can be updated over time as better information is available. But it'll run the gamut from the exposure to the socioeconomic information. And I think on the next slide, I'll be turning it back to Maureen here.
Hey, Maureen, before you start, is it with the social vitality index? That was a term she used several slides back.
Social vulnerability.
Social vulnerability index. So is that something you developed, or is that a standard index from wherever?
That is an index, I believe, prepared by the CDC. And we are, there are pieces of it available to us that we can pull into the Spokane index.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that index is available nationwide, and it's at the census tract level. So it's pretty widespread. And the CDC updates it, I think, every four years. So we have data from 2022. And it's actually what we used when we did our displacement risk assessment in the Housing Action Plan as well. A lot of similar indicators that we're looking at. So just for next steps, we are going to be turning our attention to do more external focus and jumpstart some of that engagement. We are eager for the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board to hopefully get up and running so we can bring all of this work to them as well, and want to work with them to develop the survey and other components that we'll be working on with workshops and forums and different topics. So hopefully, in the next month or so, we expect to be meeting with them when they're all up and set up and have a meeting scheduled. And as our consultant mentioned, we'll meet with them three times over the next year. So won't take all of that board's time, but have a significant role in this work, in addition to, of course, keeping other boards and commissions, planned commission, city council updated as well. So we anticipate coming back in January, February next year to share some of the work that we've been doing around the policy audit, talk more about climate impacts and climate justice, and then some of that framework that we have going on related to the vulnerability assessment, and can give an engagement update as well. So don't have that meeting set yet, but we'll work with Jacoby on getting that on your calendar. So with that, oh, one more. We do have our webpage up, and been using that as a repository for information and just standalone documents. So we'll pull this recording and put that up there as well for viewing out. We have a newsletter, email list that we are cultivating. And I sent an email last week just to promote these meetings and kind of share out what we've been doing. So anticipate that ongoing. And we'll also be coordinating that with general comprehensive plan outreach with the Plan Spokane email newsletter that we're in the process of developing right now as well. So those are sort of the touchpoints that we have going on right now, and certainly welcome discussion or questions that any of you may have.
Councilmember Klitschke, then Councilmember Catcart.
In one of the early slides, where there was more of a comprehensive plan side of this, but you were talking about updating the active transportation levels of service.
Yeah.
Is that including an ADA level of service?
I'm going to turn that over to Spencer.
The state has certain requirements around that multiple level of service. I don't know if it includes ADA. We don't, we haven't done the work to actually develop that level of service yet. So I don't have a specific answer, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Yeah, STA did a little bit of that when they were, they did some stop analysis, and they did an ADA level of service on their stops. So I don't know if that's a place to look for how to do it, but I just thought it would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Councilmember Catcart.
Yeah, I've got several questions, so just cut me off.
I'm going to let you ask all of them in a row.
Is the, first off, is the public survey going to be scientific?
I'll turn that over to Marianne.
We did not, we did not plan for scientifically representative sampling.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, you know, and there's a comment, quote, "Everyone who lives in Spokane has the right to engage." A lot of emphasis on public input, authentic, quote unquote, authentic input. So I'm just wondering, could you describe the plan to ensure that the broad general public, unconnected to this council, unconnected to any special interest group, unconnected to any other organization, how they will be getting access to this to participate?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. Well, the link would be publicly available through your comms channel. So we'll work with the communications team in terms of how they get the word out to your city residents. There's not a plan of like having this like scientifically, you know, sampled. It's more open public engagement, public survey, not like a representative scientific sampling. So we will work with your comms team to get the word out as much as we can, and through the community organizations that we flagged in the engagement plan, through targeted engagement that way, through their networks as well. That's typically how we handle it. We can also place ads, if that's the way. We've had a lot of success using social media ads in other communities. So we would work with your comms team to find out what the best approach is to reach the broad public in Spokane. Sometimes, for some communities, that's newspaper ads rather than social media buys. So we can, we have, we use, we utilize different approaches.
Well, I appreciate that. I hope that there will be an actual plan. I don't think we at the city have figured this out, frankly, and that's why I asked about the scientific survey.
We have ideas, we have ideas that work in other communities, that we would work with your comms team and obviously the staff as well, that we would work together to build up the rollout. It wouldn't, you know, we do thoughtful rollouts of our surveys.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I would just say, somebody who's, you know, campaigned three different times in five years, the, probably the issue I hear the least at the doors is this one. And so I think it's critical, especially with costly potential outcomes, that we have that direct input from the broad community. And again, not those tied to special interest groups or even this council.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I would follow up. I just want to follow up. There's some, there's some, some of the boxes that you had in your slides talked about two-way dialogue with different groups, and it talked about partner agencies and partner groups. Could you describe who those partner agencies and groups are? And how do you plan to conduct the two-way dialogue with these groups? And who are those groups?
Yeah, certain, so I will pull up the table with the groups that we've had identified thus far in the engagement plan. And certainly, there could be additional groups. There's a few opportunities for two-way dialogue. One is through, well, one is through representatives from the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board directly. So that's a limited dialogue with folks that will be representing some of those categories that you saw. And we'll have three touchpoints with them that will be two-way dialogue. The other approach with two-way dialogue would be via focus groups. And we don't necessarily, and we call them focus groups, but often they're more like community specialized meetings rather than like a scientific focus groups where it's a one-way, you know, extraction of information. We often share information in those, that style focus groups so that it becomes more of a two-way dialogue. And then I think that I can invite Maureen to comment as well, but I know that part of the intent with identifying community organizations, right, from those different categories, would be to do some direct engagement. But we, as consultants, don't necessarily need to hold those relationships. To the extent that we facilitate those relationships for this, you know, with the city staff really holding those relationships, it's really a shared effort there. So if Maureen wants to go and do some direct engagement with community organizations, which is the plan, we can provide the materials for those engagements, if that makes sense. So it's a two-way dialogue. But Maureen, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Well, I'm going to jump in really quickly. What were the languages? You said it was going to be in different languages. What languages will this be translated into?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be following along with the language access resolution on that. So I think that that one has a metric for 3% of the population. And there's about five or six languages identified. So I think we have scoped up to six translations.
Okay, thank you, Maureen.
And I'll just say really quickly, on the, that's kind of where the additional work from the city core team can come in, where we can be dynamic. And if we identify that there, you know, there is a missing voice or constituency that we can put in the extra effort to make sure that we connect with them. And we've done that previously, like for South Logan, we, you know, had a general workshop, but we realized that we weren't hearing directly from Gonzaga students who live in the area. So we went to Gonzaga directly, myself and Casey Downey, and we met with their student senate. And so we took those materials that had been prepared for the official plan workshop and utilized them again, so we can do similar tactics here.
Councilmember Catcart, another question?
Yeah, and in interest time, I'll try to move a little quicker here. So back to the partner agencies, that what it said was that you were going to take work that had already been completed by partner agencies or partner groups. I'm just wanting to hope that that will be kind of done transparently. It'll be denoted that this policy is something that was created by this group and that we are using it in this way. I just think transparency there is really critical, so folks know where things are coming from if we are taking it directly from another group. And then could you just maybe describe the difference, the definitional difference between climate impacts and climate justice? That's been referenced a few times as two separate items. And I guess I assume they were one and the same. So I'm curious what the difference is.
Oh, yeah. I can respond to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So the first question Lisa might want to add here for policy development is absolutely tracking where the policy comes from. Lisa, do you want to say anything about the policy audit and how that feeds into the process?
Yes, we are going to be reviewing all the comprehensive plan elements and the prior sustainability planning, and critical areas ordinances and things like that across 11 different topic areas. And we'll be tracking the source of the policy and the strength of it, and any potential ways to meet the new HB 1181 requirements through adapting existing policy or potentially coming up with some other options. I don't know, Marianne, if there was more you wanted me to cover there.
No, I think that makes sense. And then even tracking when a policy idea comes from the community as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Note those in our matrix, or put in the written documents in parentheses, you know, what the source was.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the climate impacts, right? We're just, the climate impacts, we're focused on the things that, like generally speaking, what, how are, how are people and communities and systems impacted by climate change, right? So from climate current and projected future climate impacts. So the heat impacting the entire city of Spokane, and how is that happening? Climate justice is focused on addressing the unequal and disproportionate impacts from climate change. So it's by prioritizing health and safety of those who face the greatest risk from climate impacts. So that, that they sound the same definition is like very accurate, because they're, they're, they kind of complement each other. But impacts is more of the general term. And then climate justice is what's focused on understanding the unequal compounding and disproportionate impacts of climate change.
So I'm going to jump in really quickly in the interest of time. Would you email us your definitions that you are using? I think that would maybe help Councilmember Catcart and others to see the actual definition of how those words or those phrases are being applied as we go forward.
One last question.
Okay, one last.
So maybe if I'm understanding correctly, climate justice might be something like, if we are going to get a $12 million grant for trees, that we would put those trees where we don't have a lot of canopy, like northeast Spokane?
Correct, yeah.
On that note, it'd be great to get an update on where those trees have been planted and how much. But my question is, policy recommendations referenced a few times up there as part of this. Not once did I see anything about specifically cost or environmental impact. What, what sort of data points might you be providing that would cover those aspects of the policies?
Lisa, did you want to?
Sure.
Try to address that?
I think we mentioned at this stage, we're focused on the information and evaluation and early policy audit. In later stages, there will be a process to prioritize actions and then develop what that means for, is it leveraging a current program or staff, or is it something that needs additional attention? So that'll come, but it's just later, later in the process.
Well, Maureen, do you have anything else?
Just on the glossary point, we do have one that we are in the works of Adapting Commerce has a very, very unwieldy one. It's 11 pages. So we've pared it down to the most common terms that we'll use. So we have that actually ready to go. And we'll share that out and also work on getting it on the website.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you to all our speakers this morning and for education. You can see we're very interested in this topic. So I'm sure we're hearing from you again.
Yeah, thanks for the great questions. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have the housing and community development, and they're going to come with an update on the consolidated plan. You ladies tag teaming today?
I'll be primary. She's my backup.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, council. Thanks for having us today. We have some members from the CHHS department joining, and we will be giving you an update on our 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan. My name is Tessa Gillett. I'm a program professional in the CHHS department. So I've been helping with the efforts for the consolidated plan. I'm joined by several colleagues. I've got Heather Page. And then we also have Carlos Placencia and Kimberly Bab. Uh, our, our other team member, John Gamal, cannot join us today, but he's also been an integral part of the team. And we also have some community partners. We're trying to take a regional approach to this effort and one is joining us today. Uh, we have Aiden Fritz from Spokane County. So I'll talk a little bit more about our joint efforts in the coming slides. What I wanted to talk to you about today is a little bit of background about the Consolidated Plan, its purpose, the primary areas of funding, our anticipated resources for the next five years. I also want to take a quick look back at the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and what we've achieved. And then we'll look ahead into the planning efforts for the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, what we've been doing for stakeholder engagement, community outreach, and then our timeline for preparation and submission of this plan. And we should have plenty of time at the end for questions, but feel free to ask them throughout. Uh, before I go ahead, I wanted to just point out that we are currently celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And several weeks ago, we got a letter from our HUD Regional Field Office. And it stated that since 1975, 192,340,700 dollars in CDBG funds have been used by the City of Spokane to deliver vital services and support critical investments in the city. That's pretty amazing. So what is the Consolidated Plan? The Plan is a requirement of HUD. It's a strategic plan that we create every five years. And the Consolidated Plan assists the city in determining the community needs for low to moderate income households. The Plan also outlines the strategies that we'll use to address these needs with the federal funds we receive from HUD. The strategies are outlined year by year in our annual action plans. The Consolidated Plan also helps us identify community needs in several critical areas, including public services and facilities, housing and homelessness, community and economic development, and infrastructure and enhancement. And as I mentioned, this time we're taking a regional approach to our Consolidated Plan. We've been having regular meetings with staff at Spokane County. They're also working on their Consolidated Plan at this time, as well as City of Spokane Valley. It's been a great way to share data, to share input, to offer advice. So we found those meetings to be really fruitful. We'll also be hosting a joint community stakeholder meeting with Spokane County this fall. And we've been working with Amy Manning, who's being funded by the CLIP Grant. The CLIP Grant is to help ensure alignment with the COC's five-year plan to end homelessness, the, the city's comprehensive plan, and other community stakeholders. So she's been really vital in just making sure that we take a broad community lens, uh, and we're aware of other organizations' planning efforts. There are three primary areas of funding that are covered by the Consolidated Plan. The first is the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG Program. This program provides resources to address housing and community development needs that benefit low to moderate income individuals. Eligible activities under this funding include public improvements, public facilities, public services, rehabilitation, and economic development. Our current allocation from HUD for program year 2024 is a little over $3 million. The second area is the Home Investment Partnerships or HOME Program. This program creates housing opportunities for low-income households. Eligible activities with home funding include multifamily housing development, housing for people with special needs, homebuyer assistance, housing rehabilitation, and rental assistance in the form of vouchers. And our current allocation from HUD is about 1.16 million. And thirdly, we have the Emergency Solutions Grants or ESG Program. This program assists individuals and families to regain, regain permanent housing after experiencing a housing crisis or homelessness. And eligible activities with this funding are street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, and HMIS or CMIS systems. And our current allocation is 274,772 dollars. Spokane is considered a Formula grantee, so that means that HUD uses a formula to determine our funding each year. And this formula takes into account factors like population size, levels of poverty, and other demographic and economic data. The funding is determined on a program year basis, which is a little different than a calendar year. The program year begins on July 1st and ends on June 30th. So we don't know exactly what our funding will be for the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, but we can kind of extrapolate based on what we received for the current program year. So if we look at the three different funding sources, we estimate that over the next five years, we will receive about $22.4 million in funding. You saw an iteration of this slide a couple of weeks ago when Dawn Kinder was here to talk about the CHHS RFP process. But I've separated out the funding sources to really highlight what is covered in the Consolidated Plan. So on the right, you see all of the funding for homeless services that are managed by our department. Um, it's about three times larger than the Formula Grants. The Formula Grants on the left are what is included in the Consolidated Plan. So you'll see I've got the ESG funding, the HOME and the CDBG. I've also added a fourth bar. It's kind of the lighter blue. It's CDBG SFR. That stands for Single Family Rehab. And that is our low-interest loan program for low-income homeowners to do rehabilitation projects. That is a revolving loan program. So we put out the loans, homeowners do the rehab, or they do a rehab project and then they repay that loan back to the city. We put that money in a revolving loan and then we use those funds to create more loans for low-income homeowners. So we include that single-family rehab program in the Consolidated Plan. So let's take a quick look back at what was, um, covered in the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan. We have three main priorities. One was to improve affordable housing access and availability. Two was urgent public health and safety response. And three was community-based social service planning. Now, priority number two was very specific to what was happening in the world at the time. The last Consolidated Plan was drafting, was drafted during the beginning stages of the pandemic. So that really was an urgent need at the time. We haven't focused as much on that priority in the last several years and I do not anticipate it will be a priority in the upcoming plan. I also want to point out that we are still in this Consolidated Plan right now. It, it will end June 30th of 2025. So if we look at some of the funding from the last Consolidated Plan, we allocated about $8.8 million for CDBG capital projects. And we funded 28 projects. And these are things like apartment rehab, community center improvements, service facility improvements. The photo here shows the Chaz Dental Clinic near the MLK Center. They received some capital funding from, uh, from us for the last, for this project. Then we have the Home Rehabilitation Program. We allocated about $8 million to fund various home repairs. This does include, again, some of those revolving loan funds that I just discussed. So with this funding, we completed 711 minor home repairs. We gave out 94 single-family rehabilitation loans. And we ran a one-year pilot for multifamily rehab and we completed three projects that year. The photos you see here are a before and after of a wheelchair ramp that was falling apart. It was repaired through our Minor Home Repair Program. That has really become a go-to program for residents who are aging in place and need accommodations to their home. And then we have CDBG Public Services. We allocated about $7.3 million to fund 68 unique projects. Public services include things like workforce training, services for children, victim services. Some of the other ones listed here are food banks where 381,941 people were served, dental vouchers, 3,363 were provided, and housing counseling and homeownership assistance where 1,626 households were served. One of those households is pictured here. Uh, this family came over from the Ukraine. They're refugees. They settled in Spokane. And as they became settled, uh, the mother, Luba, started to take English language classes from World Relief. That allowed her to help her husband Ruslan with his construction business. So together, she does the translation, he does the construction work. They've created a prosperous business and they really wanted to own a home. And so they worked with SNAP Financial Access, one of our sub recipients, to go through homeownership counseling, to qualify for a loan. And then they received some down payment assistance so they could close on their first home in June 2024. Uh, I want to point out how excited they were to be featured in this presentation and to have their photo shared with you all. They were extremely happy. And then the HOME Program. The HOME Program allocated about 3.2 million. And that funded four multifamily construction projects, including the one you see here, which is Sinto Commons, two multifamily rehab projects, and one tenant-based rental assistance program. So now let's start to look ahead a little bit to the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan. We launched our efforts for this plan in the spring. And we've been focusing primarily up until this point on stakeholder engagement and community engagement. We had an internal stakeholder meeting with other departments at the city. That was really helpful in just better understanding their own planning efforts, getting feedback from them. They've shared some really great data with us. And we also had a series of external stakeholder presentations. We've presented to the COC, the Community Assembly. Uh, I know Aiden behind us presented to the Board of County Commissioners and also talked about our joint planning efforts. And starting next month, we will start, we will undergo a series of consultations where we'll meet with community organizations who provide services or have valuable insight to provide to us to inform our Consolidated Plan. We've also focused on community engagement this summer. We have a website where we've been posting regular updates on our planning efforts. Uh, we also have a community needs survey that is linked on that website. And I have flyers with me here that I'm hoping to give you all today. So you can encourage your constituents to take our survey as well. This survey has been a great way to get community feedback and so we're trying to promote it as best as we can. We'll have an ad in The Inlander coming up next week. And we've also been promoting it at Eddie Bents. And our GIS department is working on an interactive map. This map will show the different projects that were completed over the last five years so that citizens can learn a little bit more about where this funding is going in the community. We've been attending events this summer with the Office of Neighborhood Services. That's been really fun. We did Summer Parkways, Juneteenth, Unity in the Community. This weekend we'll be at El Mercadito. And it's been a great way to interact with community, stakeholders, with citizens, and also to really promote that community needs survey.
Question on the community needs survey. What languages is it in?
It is in, yes, it is in several different languages. It is English, Spanish, Arabic, Vietnamese, Marshallese, and Russian. Thank you for asking because I forgot to mention that.
Yes, so I would be curious at some point, all those different languages, what the response has been from those communities?
Okay. We'd be happy to provide that. We've hosted several community stakeholder meetings. We had two in-person meetings and two virtual meetings within the last two weeks. And we've got a couple more upcoming. We'll have one in September at the MLK Center. And we're also having a joint stakeholder meeting with the county on October 1st. And we also hope to do some more outreach to the Community Assembly and the Neighborhood Councils this fall. This is our tentative timeline. I've kind of gone through what we've been doing from April through present, so I'll jump into September. I mentioned the consultations that will start next month, neighborhood council engagement. We'll also start to analyze all of the data we've received in September. So the community needs survey feedback, all of the feedback we're getting through our meetings and our stakeholder engagement. And that will help inform the priorities for the next Consolidated Plan because we'll also start to draft that plan in September. I also mentioned that October 1st joint community stakeholder meeting with the county that will be at the Northeast Community Center. It's really important to gather that feedback and do that analysis in, in September and October because in November, we will be releasing our requests for proposals for CDBG funding for program year 2025. And we want to make sure that RFP is aligned with the goals that will be in the Consolidated Plan. We'll also begin drafting our annual action plan around that time. And that outlines the strategies that we'll be undertaking for the next year. Yes.
So Tess, when you release the request for proposal, what is that window of time? And then when do you anticipate those monies will be awarded, since it's sometime in 2025?
Right. So this RFP will follow the program year cycle. So we'll open the RFP in November. It will be open for 60 days, so we'll close it in January. And then we'll go through our normal process of RFP review, CHHS board approval. Those funds are set to be allocated July 1st, 2025, which would be the, the first day of the next Consolidated Plan.
Thank you.
So once we have our Consolidated Plan drafting, drafted, we'll open it up to a public comment period in February or March. And then we'll move right into a public hearing, CHHS board approval, city council approval. And we will submit the Consolidated Plan to HUD on May 16th for their review and ultimate approval. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, in the workgroups, focus groups, uh, that you're having, how specific are we getting with regards to what these dollars can be used for? Is it just broad categories, clearance, public facilities, or are we getting into the actual details?
The way we've been doing them is if you look back to the slides where I went over the three broad sources of funding, what the eligible activities are, we're showing them those eligible activities and we're asking for their priorities and feedback for each of those eligible areas.
Well, for, for example, um, you know, there's a desperately needed firehouse in LeTah Valley and you could use these dollars to build a firehouse. Is that specifically being presented as an option for folks to consider?
Yeah, there's been a lot of questions around what is a public facility? What can be funded with capital dollars? And so we've been giving them those types of examples so there's better understanding.
I just hope that we are, because there are a number of things that we can do with these dollars outside of what we have traditionally done. And I just don't feel that we, we have a clear ROI, um, when, when these dollars get spent. There's no, you know, expectation of, of an ROI. And so I would rather us look at what are the things that we, we are already desperately trying to do, like building a firehouse, and, and how can we get that done with the existing dollars? And, and here it is, right here. And so we have that opportunity to, to do that, uh, without needing to do anything special or, or go out to the voters. So I just think that it's important that we are showing folks what these dollars could be used for, how we have used them in the past, what, if we, if we can even guesstimate an ROI for those previous investments so that they can make the best decision possible, um, just given those options. I know, you know, this has been a point of, of contention in the regional authority discussions because other jurisdictions do use these dollars in a myriad of other ways, um, to their benefit. And so I just think it's important that we, we do that as well.
Sure, that's great feedback. And I think as we develop that interactive map, perhaps there is a way where we could put a little bit of, I don't know how we would calculate the ROI specifically for every program, but certainly if we can highlight some of the outcomes of these accomplishments, that could be very helpful for people.
I think that would be great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klitschke?
So these ones come from multiple different sources, right? Are any of them confined to be used in certain, like, low-income census tract areas?
We can allocate the funds that way. So all of the funds have to be spent to help low and moderate income individuals, households, or census tracts.
So, I don't know, like, the, the areas we need fire stations aren't particularly low income. So I feel like that's a little bit of a snag.
Yeah, we would definitely have to look at that area to see if they would qualify for the funding.
The HUD document says it's allowed.
Councilmember Dylan, okay.
So I do want to just touch on that. While an activity may be allowable, it has to meet national objectives. It has to serve the population that's designated in the funding source, which is low and moderate income individuals. Or we have to have a way of designating it to a particular census tract. So you are correct in that we would have to find that alignment in order to be able to use the funds. But the activity itself may be, may still be eligible if we had the correct population in place.
Yeah, like, we need one in Five Mile and I don't think it would.
Councilmember Dylan, I'll come back to Councilmember Kat Cart and I have a question.
Yeah, thank you so much for this and really appreciate all the, the work and efforts. And, um, I guess just to piggyback on some of the regional authority planning discussions, appreciate the presentation in the county too. And we had a good meeting, um, this month about what it looks like to develop kind of an MOU. And staff are going back and looking at, um, more of that collaboration. How do you see some of this kind of interfacing with that work?
Well, I can speak to the collaboration we've been doing with the county. And that I think that sharing the feedback we're receiving and the data is going to be really critical. We don't want to duplicate efforts. We want to make sure that the county is serving their needs, the city is serving their needs. Um, we're using the funding equitably and that we're, we're trying to serve as many people as possible. So I think as far as the planning, gathering feedback, analyzing data, that's a way we could all work together. At the end of the day, we'll have to write our own plans and then focus on those goals. But I think we are seeing a lot of overlap. So we're trying to really hone in on those areas because that also informs our RFP process. We want to make sure our funding is, you know, we're getting the most bang for our bucks. So if we can coordinate funding with other entities, that is very helpful.
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Yeah, I, I guess, um, the, the description we just got makes me think we should get another presentation that goes more into the weeds than on what are those national, uh, requirements?
Eligible?
Yeah, what, what, what is all that? So if we could get deep into the weeds on all the different eligibilities and, and when they become eligible, where the census tracts need to be, I, I think that would be super helpful for us. And it seems like we have time since this isn't going to be adopted till May, so.
Right, okay.
That'd be great.
We'll make a note of that.
I'll just say Tess, when they changed the Community Block Grant Program, I think it's almost four years ago now, because it was allocated by districts. Districts would get their money and those districts really felt they had no input. And I think there is still confusion around how community block grant dollars can be accessed by neighborhoods because now they feel they have no input. So I don't know what type of education's been going on around that or. So I don't know what type of education's been going on around that or addressing those concerns.
Well, we've been hearing that loud and clear in the community workshops, so I'll let Heather speak to it.
So we are exploring options for how we can bring that feedback from the neighborhoods, from the community centers, back into the process. We do have a meeting with HUD September 9th through the 11th to specifically talk about how we can collaborate with the community centers and the neighborhoods while still meeting the national objectives and some of the low mod income requirements we have to meet, because that's where we ran into just a little bit of an issue in the past. And so I would hope that we would have some information maybe by October, November. Yeah.
That'd be great, even just so they understand it, because when it changed, I didn't get it. It's like, what? So anyway.
I will say, I think that we learned a lot, too, all being somewhat newer and that none of us were here when the last Consolidated Plan was developed. Getting that historic feedback from the communities has been really helpful as we try to look at how we can bring some of that funding back.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for them? Well, thank you so much for that.
And I have flyers for the community survey that we would love for you to take and hand out. I don't know if I can leave those with you, Jacoby, or just, okay, thank you so much.
Do you have digital things that we can share, too?
Like links?
Or like a digital version of that flyer that we could post on Facebook?
Yeah, we could send this to you.
Awesome, yeah. Well, okay, maybe, maybe that will make sense when I actually use the QR code and see what's there.
Could you send what the HUD definition of low to moderate income is, so I can understand that?
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that brings us to the end of our study session. Thank you all, it's been pretty informative. Again, we do not have council on Monday night in honor of Labor Day weekend, so we ask you all have a safe and happy weekend, and we'll see you back on September tonight. This meeting is adjourned.